Um, yep, yep, that can just practice. Keep some school work on. Keep some busy. You don't want to do this.
All right, I show ten after six, so we will go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. I do not believe there are any changes to the agenda, so entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. ESAT County Schools empower all students to become productive, responsible citizens of an ever-changing global society. We'll take a minute for public input on non-agenda items. Okay, then we'll move on to the secretary report.
We've got our fund balances again, the trends are just kind of continuing as they have. Nothing too exciting there. Might see a change next month because this month we're approving some larger open enrollment bills. Yep, and with the budget, I've gotten some good information from other SBOs as to how to create line item budgets and stuff like that, so we might be able to get some better financial reports that you guys can dig into if you want. So, I'm forward to that.
All right, any?
Any questions?
Yeah. Looks like we don't have correspondence, so we'll move on to the administrative reports.
All right, do you have it up there?
Oh yeah, I will do that.
We had the opportunity to just look at our winter data, just where we're at as of now, so I just wanted to share that report. What you're looking at is healthy indicator number one on the left, which is basically just the percent of students that are screened. So if you see the goal is ninety-five percent, we usually have no problem reaching that. And then you're also seeing how does ESAT County Elementary, which is the top, compare to Prairie Lakes and then the Iowa Department of Education? So you see the number of students we have there versus Prairie Lakes and the Iowa Department of Education. And then you're also looking at healthy indicator number three, which is the percent of students at benchmark. So basically it's a test and there's a score that says this is the score they need to make to be benchmark. Um, so the students that are at that or above what percent of our students. So for literacy, you're seeing there that this year, the winner of twenty-four, twenty-five, we had sixty-nine percent. Okay. And then you can see how that compares to Prairie Lakes and then to that Department of Education. Now, I did just a quick look back at last year's data at the winner of twenty-three, twenty-four. And right there, that's the healthy indicator number three, I noticed when I was looking at this, I didn't tell you that. So last year, we had sixty-four percent, that would be at benchmark, so that'd be on the right. Whereas the AEA was fifty-nine and Iowa Department of Ed was sixty-five. So, just something that we noted as a system was that our system, the elementary building that we grew of our percentage, of Prairie Lakes and Iowa Department of Education. So, we celebrated that and we talked as a team about, you know, what are some things that they did to make that happen? And so, um, the conversation was about just the intentional work that they're doing as they're interviewing the students. Sometimes it's just those small changes that are making big impact. Um, a lot of that is coming from the letters training that our teachers are getting. But they are also looking at their data every week in their POC, and that was the other thing that they talked about, that those teams are really doing the right work. So, kind of think from that moving back last summer, um, to POC, they've come back, um, just at twenty weeks. And they have really dug into the work. And so every week on Tuesdays, they are digging into that data and talking about, you know, how are you doing things differently? So that work is really the right work. And then if you can also see math, we had similar results. So this year, seventy-four percent of our students were at benchmark compared to Prairie Lakes and then the Iowa Department of Ed. If you notice last year, so we were at seventy, so we grew from seventy to seventy-four. Um, whereas Prairie Lakes even dropped and then the Iowa Department of Ed came up one. So we celebrated that. Um, this next piece of data is our school pace data. This is from Art, our American Reading Company, the system that we use. We have an online system that we keep track of. Um, and so, there's a lot of information here. The things at the top are their levels. Um, and each grade level has then a target by the end of the year of where they want their students to be. And that's what you're seeing at the right then, is the percent of students that are at emergency, meaning they're far below that. They really want to see them do that, those that are at risk, so they're close to being on grade level, but they're not quite there yet. And then proficient or above. And those targets change through the year, throughout the year. So it gets, you know, um, for example, kindergarten, by the end of the year, they're supposed to be, I think, two G. So they're trying to get all of those kids there to that two G mark and above. But then every grade level is a little different for that mark. We really look at those percentages on the right and, um, how they are looking to get students proficient. And then, a goal that our district, that our building has is to reduce the number of students, the percent of students, I'm sorry, that are persistently at risk. Um, this is based on our, in literacy and math, but we're really, really looking at literacy very closely this year. And so I just gave you some percentages there. This is from our screener that we just had. So a student is persistently at risk if they have not met benchmark, benchmark for two consecutive testing periods. Otherwise, if they haven't met benchmark just one time, they're just considered at risk. So it says persistently at risk, you know, two tests, two testing periods of, well, they're below benchmark. So, if you can just see our trends there, um, for the last three years. And obviously, as the, like, the test in the winter is a little harder, especially like at K one. You know, um, the beginning of the year, they come in, they're just testing, how are they ready, kind of? And then by winter, there's pretty good, like, increase in the skills that they're asking them to do. Um, and then it will increase in the spring too. So if you notice, we're still working there, we'd like to see that lower, but you can see the trends where, you know, we were twenty, last year, we grew four percent, whereas this we're one percent, which is three students. So we're really kind of just getting that down to who those are and what are, what are some of those things that we can do to have impact on those percentages? Um, I also included some attendance data, just a comparison from this year to last year, to show the improvement that we're seeing there. You can just kind of see some raw numbers up top. Now, that was of January, we shared this with our staff as of January twenty-ninth. So we're reducing, um, the number of students that are at those percentages. And when I looked, all I could find was that the state was around nine percent. So I couldn't really find something that was very pretty on that. And then behavior, um, we have seventy-three percent very low risk and then thirteen percent at low risk. Our goal is to have that be that eighty-five. So it's at eighty-six, so we're hanging in there on that. And then, yeah, I just, um, put a little summary there. Our team, our, our staff looked at this data and one of the things we talked about is just what's a small change you can make? And one of those things we talked about, because we really looked at our five, six, they actually reduced the number of students that were persistently at risk. And one of the things they talked about was intentional instruction of vocabulary. And so, as a system, and it also aligns to what we're learning on letters. One small change is, uh, literacy coach Lisa Keys modeled a routine for vocabulary for all grade levels. So that will be something then, again, one of those small things, what's working in these pockets? How can you then replicate, replicate that work throughout the different grade levels? So, um, yeah, lots of good things happening, I guess, and wanted to share that. Uh, one other thing I did not put on here, maybe this is part of Nate's thing. We currently have fifty-five students sign up for preschool for next year. Um, and we met with Head Start today, and actually, there's a few more out there that weren't on the list that, so it could be up to like fifty-eight, fifty-nine. So, um, that's a significant increase for this year, which we kind of knew was happening. Our preschool teachers seem to have a handle on, they talked to daycares last year, they're like, oh, it's kind of low, but we know next year, there's going to be more. It's proving to be true.
Good.
That's good.
Questions for me?
How many, do you know how many schools hit the benchmark? On your first page of data, like, anybody hitting the benchmark?
Um, I'm two. Yeah, I, especially in literacy, um, which is why there's a big push from the governor, um, for letters training. So I don't know, I don't know that.
Yeah, I mean, congrats on the increases.
Teachers are really working hard to, to use every minute of every day to figure out how, there are no good things.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Tony's report is in the board packet, he is up at the basketball game. So, he said if you have any burning questions, you will be able to ask those at the next board meeting, or you can send him an email. Uh, as far as my report goes, uh, there's five things that we'll talk about tonight, nothing too lengthy. Uh, first thing, uh, would be from DeNovo. Uh, they were here on Monday, February tenth for their follow-up visit, uh, and to gather final information. Um, they're gonna meet with myself and Tyler and Scott on March thirteenth to kind of talk about the information that they have found. And then they are planning to meet with the board in April to present the report. Uh, the staff faculty survey got sixty-eight responses, so, um, hopefully there was some, good data in there that they can use as part of their report. Negotiations, uh, they have officially started between the teachers' union and, uh, the school district. The initial proposal from the teachers' association was at four point oh percent with, uh, the TSS state raises at four point nine percent. This is, uh, due to the state law change last year that set the minimum at fifty thousand dollars this year, and then sixty-two thousand for somebody on their thirteenth year or so. The state is still funding raises for certain teachers based on where they are in their career. Uh, the board's counterproposal was three point three percent increase and a four point three percent increase, uh, with the TSS raises. So, uh, initially, starting out very close, and I'd just like to thank the teachers' association, for their initial offer that, uh, came in at a very easy place to start negotiations. Part of the, the major contributing factors this year, which they were aware of and are willing to understand and work with the school district on, is we had forty-two students less, uh, this year than we did last year. And so the funding effect on that will happen next year, not this year, because right now we're being funded from last year's enrollment. So, they know with less students, we will have less money coming in. And then the other thing that really hurts this year as far as money goes, we're looking at a ten percent increase in their health insurance premiums. Uh, so, when you put all that together, uh, especially with the ten percent insurance, that is the majority of the raise, uh, and that three point three percent is covering the insurance premium, so. Uh, well, there will be some follow-up meetings scheduled and, um, from the discussions that I've had, I believe that we'll be able to issue contracts, uh, when we can, so, things are looking good there. Open teaching positions at this time. Uh, this building has six, um, our elementary has none. The first three are all carryover teaching positions from last year. We're looking for two high school special ed teachers and a high school Spanish teacher. In addition to that, we are looking for one high school math teacher and then we will be looking for two, uh, high school science teachers next year, so. One thing to note on that is we, um, the administration is going to be attending some, uh, job fairs coming up. So, I know on Wednesday, Tony's going to Nebraska, uh, we're scheduled to go to UNI, Iowa State and Iowa as well, uh, in an attempt to meet some teachers, looking for jobs, so. And then as far as associates go, we're looking for one elementary associate at this time. Uh, and we are looking for some middle school coaches, uh, after we go through personnel items tonight. We'll see what those positions are, so. Initial budget work has begun. We'll be discussing some of that tonight with the action items. Uh, at this time, it looks like the district, uh, tax rate is expected to drop a few cents from fiscal year twenty-five, so. Current legislation, uh, there's a lot of bills involving education right now, but the main ones that everyone's talking about and looking at is first the SSA, uh, student supplemental aid, um, increase from this year to next year. Uh, at two percent, I believe there's a hundred and fifty-nine school districts that will be on the budget guarantee in the state of Iowa due to declining enrollment and just funding. So, uh, last I heard, the House approved two point two five, and now the Senate and the House have to agree. So, I think it's safe to say that our percent will be somewhere right there. And they're still discussing the calendar bills, um, I'm not holding my breath on that one, so, it happens every year. Okay. Thanks Karen, my report.
Any questions? All right, we have no discussion items, so we will move on to the action portion. Uh, first up are the consent agenda items.
So you know on the bills, if you've noticed, there's a correction to the January board bills. The total was correct that we approved, but it was missing some of the details. Just hidden in my Excel file when I printed it off, so, that's just a correction to let me know exactly what those bills were. And then, uh, also was asked about the open enrollment we have coming out of the Pebble Fund, and that is actually like a building rent for the, how do you put that, the consortium?
The NCCS at Northwest, uh, at Manson. So it's, it's building rent.
I don't think we, yeah, no policies, so, any questions on those? Or is it an entertaining motion?
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up is the budget guarantee resolution.
All right, so kind of as we talked about the budget this briefly earlier, the budget guarantee is for school districts that are experiencing declining enrollment from one year to the next. Our budget enrollment from last year, this year, shows our district down thirty-seven point four kids. Um, I've been throwing around the number forty-two this year, because that's the number of students that were actually down in our seats. So, um, with that budget enrollment of negative thirty-seven point four, the budget guarantee estimated amount for this, uh, district would be around two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. That is one-time funding and authority based on enrollment decrease, so basically districts can prepare, uh, to make adjustments as they go forward. Any questions about the budget guarantee?
No. I guess how long has it been since we've done it, since we've had to do it, since our enrollment went down that much? Was it even last year that we do it?
There were no, there wasn't.
I was gonna say, I think usually you approve it just in case, but I don't know when the last time you actually needed it.
Okay, I can't remember either.
It's been at least three years, maybe? Two, three years?
Seeing a motion to approve the budget guarantee? I'm moved to approve the budget guarantee as stated or doing, you want me to read it whole thing?
Nope.
Okay, there's a motion in a second to approve the budget guarantee as stated, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up, we have the approval of estimate and hearing dates.
Okay, so six point three, um, our, this is basically our budget. In the next slide, I'll kind of show you what that looks like. Uh, so there's not many things that a school district can play around with as far as how to increase revenue coming in, most of it is state law. So, last year, there was a cash reserve levy for ESAT County, uh, and that will be decreased this year. Instructional support levy will be the same as last year, is our recommendation. Management fund will see an increase, um, due to last year, and the reasoning for that is the rising insurance costs. Uh, I just got an email the other day that had percentages on everything that's going to go up. As a reminder, our insurance carrier, carriers EMC, they are pretty much the sole school carrier in the state of Iowa. There are, there's about one other one, I think, but, um, we're pretty much tied to those increases. And then, uh, one thing Tyler and I learned this year is, so last year, they threw in that one percent wind and hail deductible, which is very significant for a school district like us. It means if we have a minor hailstorm, uh, and we don't reach a threshold of like two hundred and sixty thousand, we just have to pay for it. Because that's one percent of our total value. So, we can use money out of the management fund to pay for some of those minor fixes if we have a storm. That's not covered under their one percent wind and hail, so. Um, and then the Pebble would be the same as last year, a dollar. When you, uh, put those in the software, uh, it kind of shows the different pots of money, and the contribution that they make to form the tax rate down at the bottom. So as I stated, we were at eleven sixty-six, eleven sixty-seven last year, and the proposed tax rate for fiscal year twenty-six with these numbers and recommendations is eleven sixty-three, eleven sixty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the special.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second to approve the special levies for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now just to be clear, um, we can reduce these numbers if we had to, right, but we cannot go higher than what's stated.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep. And those numbers are subject to change based on SSA. So if they change it to two and a quarter, those numbers will change just a little bit.
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Let me scroll back up, sorry.
No problem.
All right, we are on to the Wall Lake TIF.
Okay. Uh, the actual documents for this were in the board packet. If you looked at them, they were created by an attorney, uh, as you can read. But to just explain what this is, uh, the city of Wall Lake is, uh, doing a housing urban renewal, uh, TIF in town, uh, with some ground that they're working on. And they are passing or asking to pass a sixteen-year TIF. Uh, from what we've learned about this situation, was cities can do a ten-year TIF, uh, without our approval. But if they go past that ten-year threshold, then they ask us to approve a resolution. So what they're doing is asking the school board to approve a TIF, for up to sixteen years on this parcel of land as described in the packet.
Is it, is it undeveloped right now, or basically undeveloped?
I believe so, yeah. They're building new.
I don't have a problem with them.
Any other questions, sir?
And the, the legal motion for this one is up there on the screen. Chase, you want to help?
It's always his job, hard left.
All right, I'll make a motion pursuant to section four zero three dash point two-two of the Code of Iowa. This board hereby approves the use by the city of future incremental property tax revenues produced with respect to property for a total period of up to sixteen.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the motion, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. PSYAC meeting approval and list?
Okay, so, uh, it's kind of crazy to think that we're getting down to March, April and May. And so we have our annual PSYAC meeting generally in the month of March. Um, and so in the board packet, you'll see a list of, uh, PSYAC members, most of them, most of everyone on that list has served in the PSYAC before. There are, I believe, two additions to, uh, to families to that list. Um, and we're looking at a meeting date of March eleventh at six-thirty right here.
Just stand in motion. I, I'll approve the PSYAC list and meeting date.
I'll second.
Motion in a second to approve the PSYAC list and meeting date, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next step is the needs assessment.
Okay, so just to explain this a little bit, uh, there's Iowa code out there that requires school districts to participate in a needs assessment every three to five years. And the cost of this assessment, uh, through IASB is sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. And what they do is, uh, they prepare Google forms for us to send out to our patrons. Um, and then they analyze that data, uh, presented to the district. And from there, we can look at areas that we're doing well, areas that we need to improve. And I think the overall idea of this is for us as a school district to maybe create some goals on things that we want to do better going forward, or where our patrons identify areas, uh, that we could improve, so. I would, uh, recommend that we have IASB, uh, help us out with his needs assessment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the needs assessment, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just a side note, do they then come back? I've seen some school districts that will come in and they will help facilitate some of that goal planning. Is that something they would do after this?
They, yes, they have a team that is willing to do that if we would like to.
Depending upon how that's served, okay.
Yep. Part of their services.
All right, moving on to personnel.
All right, um, fair amount of items this, uh, month here on the personnel items. Our resignations are listed, uh, in the board packet and up on the screen, as well as our contract offers. As resignations first, Christina Boos as the high school science teacher, student council advisor, NHS advisor and TLC coach. Angela Sifkin in his high school math. Nicole Martin, high school science, junior high volleyball, high school girls wrestling, middle school track. Lisa Keys is wishing to, uh, resign her coaching roles of junior high volleyball, junior high basketball. Matt Crabbe as the part-time elementary custodian. Lisa Wood as a cook and Jennifer Kramer as a cook. And as far as contract offers, uh, Helena Gomez, part-time cook. Allison Haberman, school nurse, uh, she's planning to start March third, uh, just to let you know. Uh, Nicole Hurek, uh, elementary. Uh, Nicole Hurek, uh, elementary associate, Noel Bachman, eighth grade baseball. And then at the bottom there, we have uh four individuals who want to volunteer as coaches. And we generally have any volunteer coach board approved by you guys and gals. So uh Charlie White, junior high wrestling, Tyson White for track, Sebastian Peak for boys soccer, and Brandon Steiger for boys golf.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel items.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve personnel items. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, future board meeting date. Um, if we remember from last month, Tyler gave you a a sheet that had a whole bunch of board meetings on it and tax hearings. Um, so our next regular scheduled board meeting is not going to be until March thirty-first. Uh, the reasoning for that is it puts us within that those hearing windows uh for the tax rate. So we're looking at March thirty-first uh for our next, for our March meeting to include a public tax hearing and a calendar hearing. So please note that uh date change. And then the possibility of a special board meeting on March eleventh um at six PM. And that would be to approve contracts in the event that we get settled with the Teachers Association.
Six-ten PM, that works now?
Six-ten works. We're gonna have people showing up for the PSYAC meeting, but uh that'll be a one agenda item.
Okay.
On that, so we could make that six-ten.
I won't be here on the eleventh or that Monday in the next several years. So I'm gonna keep my job, so.
Okay.
We will, are we, hopefully we're good with?
Oh, I'm I'm fine.
Okay. I just double check and make sure we have.
Make a quorum.
The quorum. That's all. Okay. All right. So we'll plan on those.
Yep. Those those would be the hearings and that would be uh, that's all we got.
Okay. If there is nothing else. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.